Let's start. I see, got it. So we can bring our meeting to order. Six oh two.
As it is.
Yeah. As it is. A couple of things, order of business that we should attend to. Number one, you sort of alluded to it before we started recording. I just wanted to recognize the fact that we lost a dear friend for a long time. Gary Ford, our CEO, passed away suddenly. So last time, Ryan, that we saw you, he was here, we were doing business, right?
Yeah.
And now he's gone. So it was quite a shock to our system. We're reeling.
Big shoes to fill.
Yeah, yeah. The town's trying to deal with it and doing their best. But I just wanted to put that out there. We are, we are at a disadvantage. And so we're trying, trying. So thanks for your patience as we do our process. That was personally what I mentioned. And the other thing I don't have to mention, we have more than a quarter. I was gonna say we have four of the three, but we have four. But it looks like someone else. So I'm looking over your shoulder to admit somebody else. Okay, so Craig, we just get that one. So first order of business is to, this is a public hearing for. Would you pick Catherine or would you like Katie? Or what do you?
My former name is Catherine, my family calls me Katie. And I go by Kate too.
Okay.
Just don't happy, everything else is okay.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you very much. So we'll be going through your commercial permit application that you sent to us before. So we did have a checklist that we had gone through as you later call. And let's see, just one second. That's this one. Maybe a link. One that we had reviewed and determined that it was a complete application. I believe there was. I think that's a Craig sign. Craig. Were there no outstanding issues on this at all?
You guys wanted me to drop off another version of the parking proposal, which I did.
Right, with the things parallel to the street?
Yes, however, I also just added another idea if it was a preferable idea to you guys. That, so I, in purple, I did where the handicap parking, as she requested, connected to the driveway. But I also realized that if it was preferable to the town, I could do just a drop off by that classroom street door and then, and then whatever handicap van could park at the church. Because we had cleared and found overflow. So that was just like, if you preferred me to just do that driveway. You know what I'm saying? Probably not, I was thinking, because then I'd have to have enough of the roads. But I was, I'm agreeable to do either way, whatever you prefer.
Okay. Well, could we, is that something we could have?
I think I put it in all of the copies.
Okay, probably did.
I just put like a little star on all of the copies, but in another color, that's an option if it was preferable. The other question I had was if do I have to put a handicap spot in if that's where you live? Or is that an option for me to put a handicap spot in? Versus just telling some of the park at the church?
So I'd have to look at the ordinance. I don't have it, I have it in my bag right here, I can't quote it right now. So just one second. I want to make sure I have a copy of this. So for everybody, I'm seeing, I think, what? Yeah, this is applied on the very back page of the package, very, 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 at the very end, I think is what this is. Is that correct?
No.
No?
Do a new. This had to be taken off, so we're doing a new parking plan, because we can't park in front of the house to get the road.
Okay.
So this is the driveway, no parking in front of the house. After handicap spot, because it would attach to the driveway. Remember we talked about that? So there's no parking in front, we can't have cars in the road. Yeah, we can't use that one, so this is the new one. And I had a copy that we dropped off because we're actually meeting last time.
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't see that drawing in the packet that was provided.
Oh, I had, I brought it the next day.
And I'm sure you did. And I'm sure that's part of our, part of our policy, just trying to go through.
And that's okay, if we have to reschedule again, I am not in a total rush.
No, that'll be clear.
Okay, could I just pass this red, is it okay?
You have, we can photocopy it.
Yeah.
There's no parking in front, we can't drop out onto the road. I could do a parking handicap that's connected to the driveway is what I understood. So I drew that in, but after I drew that, I realized the other option could just be a driveway that is like a U shape. And they could just drop off a handicap person right at the classroom and drive away. That would require another driveway entrance onto the road, so I'm assuming that's not preferred.
Off the top of my head, I'm thinking this. Pete, this is what we're talking about.
So Peter, with regard to having two access points versus one. Page nineteen of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Actually, on my page, well, nineteen and twenty, paragraph five, then we get into issues of having the measureless site distance or, which is pretty adequate, generally speaking, based on our discussions in the past. But we would have to revisit that with the second access point. What's the speed limit there, is there a speed limit? Twenty?
I don't know, I don't think I've ever seen a speed limit sign. I know the speed limit sign at the beginning of Lake Stars twenty five, so I'm guessing school street's twenty five two.
You would need two hundred and fifty feet of site distance, which probably is okay.
I'm just trying to balance with the town thinks is preferable to making it as easy for a handicactor.
Yeah, right. I guess the only concern I would have with the turnout, the U shaped turnout would be where it intersects with the, your driveway into the parking lot. I mean, it's nothing regarding the ordinance so much as it is a practical matter of, is that, you know, gonna result in somebody offender vendor at some point kind of thing?
Yeah.
But I don't see a reason why that the ordinance wouldn't allow that.
Right, I don't know.
I personally prefer the first option.
The spot, okay.
But that's just, it's not about my personal opinion.
It's probably the easier way to go, it's just a little harder for a handicap person to get to the door. But I can create a, a nice pathway that they can reach the door.
And so the ordinance says they can't do it. I mean, there's no, no reason for it, she couldn't do that, what she wants to do.
I, I don't see a reason.
Okay, page twenty?
Yeah, okay, I just listened. All right, so my opinion on that, I'll do one.
Okay. One or, yeah.
We just know, we need to know tonight though which it is, that's all. So we know what we're proving. Oh, here's one thing I had picked up on. How close would it be to the portion furthest to the north, how close would that be to your property line? Because there's a setback of ten feet.
There's room.
On page twenty one now.
Twenty one?
Yeah. Under the third paragraph.
The property line is sixteen feet from the side of the house, so I think there's ample room.
Yeah, so you could maintain ten feet then?
Yeah. I really don't have a reference other than wanting it to be as easy for a handicapper. So if you say to me that you think it's better to just have a spot on like to the side of the driveway, fine.
I mean, you're coming from twenty seven, so I don't know the exact distance to twenty seven, but you're coming from almost a stop coming on from the school street. And I know you can see well beyond two fifty that way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good point.
All right.
Yeah.
The reason I thought you guys might prefer that, the reason it came to mind was all the discussion of backing out. Because I won't be in charge of telling people how to drive if they start just backing out onto the street. You know what I mean? Like, if you look at anybody in their driveways, they just back out onto the street.
Right.
So I thought you might prefer me to create that so that no one's backing out in a van on the school street. But I don't have a preference other than trying to keep it as safe for everybody as possible.
At this point, for me, since I'm not seeing anything in the ordinance that would prohibit you from doing the U shaped part. It seems like we've met the distance to the lot line part. It looks like we're not seeing any prohibition to the school street entrance from having a U shaped driveway.
It would just be like a drop off. That's okay, drop off, not park on that, but drop off, let your person out and then go park.
Right.
Like, I wouldn't create any parking in that, I would be like, drop off and go park at the church.
So I'm not trying to suggest what to do, but if it seems like it's something that works for you, then then I would encourage you to select that option. And, and, you know, you could, one could encourage others to not park there by saying this is a drive by drop off area and get to your, out of that way. Or something to that effect, but of course that would be up to you.
Right.
I'm just going by what I'm seeing so far in the ordinance, what we've talked about and what's permitted.
Okay.
That would be my thinking, but, because it's, it's your property.
The, again, I don't have a preference, the ordinance allows either, as far as I'm concerned, the, but for those handicaps, and I only have this awareness because of former colleagues that are in this situation, that drive. They would park and get out on their own and leave the vehicle there.
You're right, I wasn't thinking about it, I was thinking we have a driver.
Yeah.
So that leans towards having a spot.
What, you can fix that with a sign, drop off only?
But if they're handicapped and they're driving themselves?
They'll have to park them.
In the regular, I think.
The other thing to consider, again, this is practicality and preference rather than the ordinance's human nature being what it is, they're gonna be lazy people that are gonna park their
Yeah, all right, I think then let's stick with doing a designated handicap spot as the approval process. Do I have to do that spot right away? Like, since it's been in the approval, since it's been approved, does that mean I have to build that handicap spot right away, or can I wait?
Um, I think the ordinance says you have a year to.
Yeah, you have to have it.
Because it was approved, I have to do it, it's not an option to do it, I have to.
Yes. Yeah, you have to provide one, minimum, one handicap space.
Okay.
Correct.
So I'm okay with that, I think it's the best way to go.
So, so for the record, you'd like to have the designated handicap parking spot.
Just to be, if you're facing the schoolhouse, just to the left of the driveway, so that it would be part of pulling in and out of the driveway as Craig suggested last time.
Right.
And, but it'd be a designated spot for someone, if they're, if they're handicapped and driving, then they have their own spot like that. I'm glad you said that, George, because I forgot about that.
Okay. All right, so if that's the case, and this is an important thing, I think we should probably have copies of this somewhere. And I know you dropped them off, and I told you here.
You can keep that arm, I know, I understand what.
We just need to make sure it's in the file.
Correct, correct. Okay, so I think, have we, do we feel comfortable knowing the intent of the applicant to apply the handicap parking spot in place designated, we feel comfy with that?
Yes.
Pete, you on board with that?
Sure.
All right, is there anything else we need to ask the applicant? I think that was the only outstanding item, just to deal with that one, I think. Anything else?
Peter, I was just looking at who's online and I can't pick up the name quick, but we just need to make sure if there's somebody here that wishes to testify, that we give them an opportunity.
That's a good point.
Did the letter run out?
It did. Um, so at this point, when I look at the Zoom meeting, on my view, right here, I, I can see it well, right? As compared to before, where I look across, so I make this.
Yeah.
So I don't see any hands raised, and I don't see people off mute at this point, but if someone did have something to say, this would be the time to do it. Okay, well, I'll try and keep one eye on that as it goes along, I'm glad you brought that up. Still no raised hands, okay?
That I believe parking was the only outstanding issue we were discussing last time.
That's the case.
Absent anything, the public might.
And I'm looking for any interested person from the public that might have something to say about this one. Still nothing there. Okay. Okay. So that was the one issue that we've talked about. I think at this point, with it determining that the application checklist was complete, I believe if there are we need to eventually get to findings effective conclusions of law for the commercial development review ordinance for this project. But I want to make sure that if there are things to bring up, that we do so. If there are any other items, maybe any other questions for the applicant?
I don't know.
And I'm looking at for the public, if there are any questions about this application so far that we have covered that need to be answered, not seeing any hands raised. Okay, are we okay to move on to conclusions of law? Okay. Okay, so this is, the project name is called The Classroom at the Schoolhouse. The applicant named Catherine. B R A N?
It's E R A R, so it's D I C, E R A R, D I L.
Thank you. And your mailing address is Q box five six two?
Yeah.
Sorry, this part is very process oriented, it's just handwriting stuff. Project location, so this is at eleven School Street.
It's ironic that by virtue of going back in person, maybe we go back in technology too. Now we're doing everything handwritten.
The, is the map in lot for this one? Or is it twenty five and sixty? Turned over between twenty five and sixty.
Yeah.
Okay. So to the town of Belgrade, co enforcement officer pursuant to the Belgrade Commercial Development Review Ordinance, last meeting of March seventeen, the town of Belgrade Planning Board has considered the application of let's see, your name. Including its site plan, the other, other supporting materials and documentation, public meeting testimony and other related materials contained in the record and makes the following findings of fact. Number one. Application from, so the project summary is is a renovation of existing structure. Not changing square footage. Two thirds of the building will be residential. One third classroom. Was a waiver request submitted? Yes, I believe we had that instance, yes, we had that in writing.
The date of spring.
The date the application accepted is complete, was that last meeting? Was that, the second meeting of September was that nineteen sixteen? It's mixed up.
Nine seventeen.
Thank you, nineteen seventeen. Was it site visit conducted? No. Okay. Well, Thursday was sixteen, so, thank you.
I'm just going by the minutes. I guess that's wrong, no?
So, no to sell.
Let me circle that.
Okay, thanks, Greg. So, so that was number two. Number three is review criteria findings, the board finds that the application for the project is complete and the app, and the applicable application fee has been paid in full to the town. Do you have a receipt for that? Not that we need it, but as long as you do.
Somewhere, there's a check.
Okay.
Somewhere on my bag.
Okay. Application materials, site plan and supporting documentation has been submitted by the applicant in our report in the project file, maintained by the town office and the project name of this. So the applicant has requested in writing the board with the following coordinates, application requirements and review standards. So it was screening.
Vegetative screening.
Vegetative screening, thank you, George, vegetation. So we're just making a list of
Of all the waivers?
Yeah. That we're asked for. So we had vegetative screening, was there other ones?
There were. A waiver for DEP certified excavation, soil erosion control plan.
And so the next one was, which one?
Soil erosion control plan.
And so, just one second, so that was we talked about the nature of the project as a board and the applicant, that there was no external construction going on and no site work. No soil disturbance. And for that reason, I think that is.
So on the checklist, did we decide those were not applicable versus?
I, I think we did decide there was no applicable.
Versus approving a waiver request for that.
Because in the
I just sent a letter of waiver request, so I don't know what.
So I'm going through the checklist, and we have three columns, one's complete, one's not applicable, and the other is waiver requested and approved. And the first one that we have check mark in the waiver requested and approved is for the screening of the structures.
I'd like to see that real quick. Need you to find it.
Yep, so in, in fact, I think we determined it was not applicable in this case.
Yeah. There was a, but this request was specific for the DEP certified excavation contractor and soil erosion control plan.
Right, so there was, there was a
That was a waiver.
Okay.
I had like not applicable fund shares, not applicable natural wetlands inventory. Not applicable stormwater management plan, phosphorus, not applicable. But I have a waiver. These two things, as well as the tree screening, planting.
And so we listed vegetative screening thing, the other thing that you submitted a letter for was the DEP certified contractor.
And soil erosion control plan.
So I'm just listing that as something you requested.
Okay.
The, what the board ended up doing was talking about some of these things that were deemed not applicable in this case. Vegetative screening one, we did agree was a waiver that was not approved.
Always prove the other one as well.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we've got those things listed. Next, the applicant has provided supporting documentation to demonstrate the boards, to the board's satisfaction that the following ordinance requirements or standards are not applicable and due to the project size, site conditions, design and other unique or standards are not applicable and due to the project size, site conditions, design and other unique features, this document, documentation includes the following. So to me, would that be any or all of the things that we said not applicable? The way it reads, I'll say it again. The applicant has provided supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the following ordinance requirements or standards are not applicable due to the proposed project size, site conditions, design, type or other unique features.
It sounds like it would be, but I would say something like, see checklist.
That's why, it's the rest of board didn't agree that that would be appropriate.
Yeah, I must all those. I think that visions, there might be one, but not.
Right. Then next is the applicant has failed to provide adequate supporting documentation to demonstrate to the board satisfaction that the applicant's proposal meets the ordinance criteria for a waiver from the following requirements or standards. And so I think what they're looking for here is a list of where the applicant has failed to provide adequate supporting documentation. So to me, I'm thinking that it's not. A good idea. Uh. Next is the board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable soil erosion or a reduction in the land's capacity to hold water. So that an unsound or unhelpful conditions exist. Based on applications submitted in the project's design. So. We will know that in this case. So it looks for specific things. Project. The project's design plan was dated what?
That thing or application?
The way this reads is. Submittals. Based on applications submitted, the project's design plan dated.
So I guess I would go with. This. January 21st, 21, which is the date of it, you signed the application. And.
Submitted to him.
Yeah. I'm not sure how we deal with. That's where you feel subsequent amendments to the application, I mean, right up to today.
Right.
Maybe to say that January 21st, 21. With. Subsequent. Submissions.
I'll make it up.
Or answer.
Okay, I put that on there. Then it continues on to say, and soil erosion control plan dated blah blah blah. Or the applicant did not submit a soil erosion plan. So in this case, the applicant did not submit a soil erosion plan. So I think we are fine with that. There's no value for that. B, the board finds that the project will not or will have an adverse impact on freshwater wetlands. This is Article 6, section 3 and 6. In our standard language has been based on. Application submittals. In public record. This is where we should be copying cases that passed that. C, the board finds the project will not or will have an adverse impact on. A lake, pond or stream, Article 6. Sections 13 and 15. So I'm gonna use the same language. D, the board finds that the project will not or will provide for adequate storm water management. This is Article 6, section 13. That we will not or will provide for adequate storm water management. E, the board finds the project will not or will provide adequate sewage disposal. Article 6, sections 14 and 15. A continuation, the board finds that the project is not or is located, located in a floodplain area and conforms or does not conform with the Belgrade floodplain ordinance. The board finds that the project, this is F, the board finds that the project will not or will result in air or water pollution. Article 6, sections 1, 13, H and 15. G, the board finds that the project will not or will have sufficient drinking water for current and foreseeable needs of the development. Article 6, section 15A. So it will have sufficient water for. Will. Can I ask a question about that? Will have sufficient drinking water. Okay. I was gonna say for serving public, but that's not what this is asking for. This is just adequate water. Thank you. Then H, the board finds that the project along or in conjunction with existing activities will not or will adversely impact the quality or quantity of groundwater. Article 6, sections 15 and 15A. I, the board finds that the proposed activity will dispose of all solid waste in conformance with all local regulations and that the type and quantity of waste proposed to be sent to the town transfer facility will not or will exceed its capacity. Article 6, section 14A. And J, the board finds that the project will not or will have an, have a significant detrimental effect on adjacent land uses and properties affected by waste, noise, glare, lighting, fumes, smoke, dust, odors or their effects from the project. Article 6, sections 1, 11, 12, 15A.
Hold on. I guess maybe for the record, we should just restate that the only comment we got from the public was in favor of the project. See the email from you about it.
Oh, true. Good point. Yep. And I'm looking at the. The zoom, I'm not seeing any hands or clussiness. Item K, the board finds that the project will not or will cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion or unsafe conditions with respect to the use of existing or proposed highways or roads. Article 6, sections 9 and 2. So. L, the board finds that the project to the maximum extent possible will not. Will not or will have an adverse effect on the scenic or natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historic and archaeological sites or any public rights for physical or visual access to the shoreline of a water body. This is Article 6, sections 14, sections 4, 5A, 6, 11 and 12. This is about having an adverse effect on scenic or natural beauty. Quite a lot of things, actually.
We're making it more beautiful.
Okay, I would say will not. For the same reasons that we listed before. M, the board finds that the project to the maximum extent possible will not or will have an adverse effect on significant wildlife habitat and critical natural areas identified by the main, beginning with Habitat Program, Maine Department of Fisheries and Wildlife, Maine Department of Conservation, Critical Natural Areas Program or the Town of Belgrade Comprehensive Plan. Article 6, section 6B. Hold on. Oh, the board finds that the project does not conform or conforms with, with all other applicable town of Belgrade ordinances including, but not limited to shoreline zoning, minimum lot size, subdivision, multifamily dwelling, manufactured housing, mobile home park, solid waste and recycling, municipal street and road, adult business, supplemental junkyard and auto graveyard and tree ordinances based on. Application. That it does conform. P, the board finds that the project will not or will unreasonably increase the concentration of phosphorus in a great pond. Article 6, section 15. Hold on. Q, the board finds that the project will not or will conform to the material storage provisions of this ordinance. Article 6, section 5. Will. R, the board finds that the applicant, applicant has or does not have sufficient right, title or interest to undertake the development. As. S, the board finds that the applicant does or does not provide for safe and adequate parking. Article 6, section 9.
The hardest one, but we did that.
It does. Thank you. Yes, that was, that was S. T. The board finds that the project. Will not or will conform to all the full provisions of this ordinance, including but not limited to development standards for specific activities where applicable, referencing Article 7. You know. Therefore, this is where we get a chance to vote on this one. And I think it might be important to talk about standard conditions of approval. Are you okay if we talk about those things now? Okay, so this is to be included in all approvals. Number one, if construction has not been substantially started within 12 months of the board approval, this approval and subsequent permit from this Belgrade CEO are now void, Article 4, section 4. Number two, the board, the board approval of this project as described above is limited to that described in the application and depicted in the company plan and other application submissions. Except to the extent that the board has expressly indicated in this document that certain depictions may be revised by the applicant without further review and approval by the board. Any changes to the application. Site plan or other supporting application submissions must receive prior approval by the board. Including but not limited to changes in the proposed location of structures, roads, parking, vehicle entrance and exit, wells, subsurface wastewater systems, the method of waste disposal, the extent and location of vegetated areas, material storage, outdoor lighting and signage and methods of stormwater and phosphorus runoff control. Three, a lesser waiver from a specific ordinance standard has been requested by the applicant in writing and approved by the board. The development or use is required to meet all applicable ordinance standards. Number four, and this is the last one, that we had in standard, the board, the board approval and its associated permit from the CEO is transferable through subsequent orders of the property. All subsequent orders are required to comply with the conditions of the project's board approval. I think that covers it pretty thoroughly. Do you have any questions about those standard conditions of the.
I think the only question I would have is in the case, that last one, the last question. If I sell the property and they wanted to have that commercial space be something else, they need your whole, to go through the whole approval. Unless they're keeping it as a classroom, they would have to go through an approval separate.
I would say so, yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Makes sense?
Makes sense that they would ask you, but it almost sounded like if they kept it a classroom, they don't have to go through it. Through a process.
Space classroom.
Then they, yeah, got it. I understand.
Okay.
Yeah. I understand and agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, so for the planning board members, are we in a position to, to vote on this one then? So. So, I would have change motion on this. If anybody's willing.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
So I make motion now with the second. Application. With the waivers granted.
I think that will work. Thank you.
A second.
In a second. The motion on the floor has been seconded. Any more discussion on this, this application? Any more questions?
No, I'm still confident.
Okay, so we'll, we'll vote and do a roll call for the benefit of the people who are not here to hear from, decide. So all those in favor of approving the application that's submitted with the standard conditions of approval. George.
Yes.
In favor, Craig?
Yes.
P?
Yes.
And I too am in favor, so that's four in favor, none opposed. So that means this has been approved. And. So this will be going to, I'm sure Anthony to deal with the next steps. Under normal situations, it would have been Gary, but he's not here, so. All right, so.
It's confusing when it's simple.
I know. Just trying to fill this incorrectly. Please, D, seven. Okay. Great.
Will I just get something in the mail or? Or I just know what the proof can go on me for?
You will get something in the mail.
Okay, great.
Yep, for sure. A, a letter of some sort saying that this is approved. Typically, we approve it and then send it to the CEO. He is authorized to give that, he or she is authorized to give that.
Is it the thing, at least I don't know unless you do here is. Co enforcement officer from Oakland is covering some of Gary's responsibilities, but I don't know which. So you might want to. Wait a week and then give Anthony a call. Make sure to stay on top of this.
Okay, I have, I still have a lot of time to do the renovations, so.
Yeah.
It's not like I needed to know. You know what I mean? I'm not, I'm not starting any.
Yeah, but you don't want anything faulty, correct?
Right, so.
Which is possible at a time like this.
Okay, I'll follow up with that.
And so what, what I'm doing, if that's okay with you, in keeping this.
It's fine.
With this package, that's gonna be signed and forwarded to Anthony. And then for the planning board members, we have a building permit. He asked us to sign it. Yeah. So we can.
We need to do anything with the, the draw, this drawing that. The one submitted today replaces.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's no confusion.
I, I think that's a good idea. I think we should officially. I I think that's a good idea. I think we should officially recognize what you submitted replaces that. Um, would it be okay, what do you, what do the board members feel like if we have Catherine indicates that this is the official parking lot diagram?
You want me to date that and like?
Initial and date, is it?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Is that, you want to pay for that? Alright, thank you. So, um, thank you. Would the planning board members please sign this? Just keep it all together right here. Thank you. E. Thank you.
I just have a handoff spot also, so that's because I had had a camera.
Okay, gotcha. We've got you dating perfect. Thank you. I think that will be sufficient. Let's all together. Leave.
That's it. Great. Now you start telling me what class you want to teach. They're recruiting our smart neighbors to share their knowledge with everybody.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Oh, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Follow up with Anthony and we'll go for it.
Okay.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay, so that was that one. I think next up for us, because we had gone through the public hearing for that one, then we've gone through the commercial applications for that one, such as it was, limited in nature and scope. Uh, next up is new business. So we have shoreline application. Right, want to guide us through what you got to go with them?
Yeah, um. So I met Gary out there to the site visit and he said it was kind of cut and dry, um, but I do know it's the height is within twenty-five feet is fifteen feet and then seventy-five it's twenty feet.
Sure.
So I didn't know, is there a Belgrade have a different, I know Belgrade some things are a little bit different, like I don't know why you told me that it would be approved if.
Is something in excess, you think of one, one of those type things?
Well, this will put it like twenty, twenty-two to twenty-three feet and we're thirty-four feet out. So what we were, what we're proposing is just bringing the, putting a foundation under existing cabin. And it's um not doing any more square footage, actually going to take away the access deck and stuff in the front and bring it up the basement less than three feet. But I got an email that was concerning to me, but Gary thought it would wouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we're talking on page ten.
Yeah.
So you're exactly right, Ryan, for structures located with less than seventy-five feet, the maximum height is twenty feet. And this, I don't know why, but Gary has gotten that confused once before. And I don't, I don't know if if our ordinance is more stringent than the state minimum.
Yeah.
That's the reason, um, although it's been at that height.
So that's the town.
Yeah, we have the prerogative of being more stringent than the state.
Yeah.
But I'm not positive that's even the case, but anyway, it is twenty feet regardless.
At that, at that distance.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe it's all along that, pretty much, and that, we did follow the model after that.
Okay, so you think it's the same?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, my question is, you know, uh, how many feet is it from, you know, the front of the camp, how many feet is it, thirty-five feet, right?
Yeah.
And you go to twenty feet, then it's forty-five, fifty-five. So the back we can't be fifty-five feet. So it doesn't get you into
Right.
That third piece of seventy-five weeks high, so it's pretty much stuck at the, you know, the twenty feet.
Yeah, I'm wondering if.
And and when it, yeah, so we got to kind of walk in from the, by the leg side and go twenty feet out.
I wonder if maybe it was because we could take the approach of, um, where Steward Sylvia would love the floodplain with the slope of the house, you know, with the foundation, as long as the height doesn't change.
Well, it would, it would make sense. You know, if you moved it back and then, you know, of course, you can, you can get the height, move the building back, you know, and go to the greatest practical extent.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
But I thought the law says if the height of the building stays the same, you can add, you can add a basement.
Right, right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so if the height stays the same.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, because it's twenty feet are the height of the existing structure.
Right, which is twenty feet. So if we take our elevations and can keep that the same, because it does have a little bit of a slope there, and I think it is still above the high water mine, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
So I just have to.
Oh, it, so it could get tight.
Oh, yeah, but I I would think I would have to probably take it to a seven foot tall, you know, not a full basement, you know.
Right, something.
Seven, little bit less.
Yeah, because right now what you're proposing is twenty-three feet.
Yeah, but we can keep, we can get a basin and keep it to twenty feet.
You know what you can do is on, on your, on the you know, for a school, at the base, you know, you get a second floor, you get to a double, double, you know, on the sides of the roof, you do your, you call it the shed roof.
Yeah.
Right, that way you get eight feet there, you get the second floor there.
Yeah.
And and then you do your basement.
Yeah, this is interesting situation. The Rudy family has like a bunch of family lives in town, they have a couple of properties, and they bought this, it's two cabins, it's one twenty, one twenty-two snow power. And one twenty-two was recently marred, has a nice big kitchen, excuse me, one twenty, I think it's a close one. One twenty-two, this one is actually just gonna be mostly just like, um, just a place to sleep, add a couple of bedrooms in the basement, actually make the kitchen smaller. And that.
It's going to be part of a larger compound.
Yeah, yeah, they have a pretty large compound, and they have two or three properties on the street.
That is interesting.
So if we can do the elevations and get the basement down, as long as you stay under that twenty feet existing height. So I'll just have to modify the plan, the application for you.
Yes.
We'll get that back to you.
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, minor modifications on plans can be done like right here, right now, but and I just wanted to offer that.
Yeah, I I propose that, you know, we keep the height the same, we do put under a concrete basement, foundation, um. And I know, I know the slope is there. We can do it and keep it under that twenty, give it at the existing height, which is twenty feet. Whether we A, have the horn step down and or B, I know you can only disturb a certain amount of soil that close, but I think we would be well under that as well.
Okay. So is there enough question in your mind about like how you want to propose and shit, that you want to go back and like do some measurements and talk to people first? I just want to make sure I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, Gary was, I'm just trying to wrap my head around why how Gary was so cut and dry though, you know, when we had the site visit with him. And it might, it might have been.
Yeah.
Hard telling.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, but I do know that we can, we can accomplish what we want to build by doing that.
Okay.
We can keep the height the same.
Yeah. And put a basement in, so then it's going to be adjusting.
It was.
How much basement?
Yeah, it would have, it would have been easier to come up and, you know, less money, it would have cost a little bit more money.
Yeah.
You know.
So, so.
Yeah, yeah, when you, when you present the revised draft, you know, layout to it, good, you draft paper, little squares, you know.
Yeah.
They've, you know. So we have a given name that.
Okay.
That's a good point. Always good to have those things.
Okay, so just for, for like from the front of the house, just the elevations, what you want, you want on the back paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's always very good.
Okay.
That way, if there's any, you know, anybody in town might have a question about anything that's happening on the shore part, right?
Yeah.
The high vis projects often.
Yeah.
And as long as we have good documentation, here's the town, then the CEO or the town manager, whoever can say this is what was proposed and this is what's approved, and we can always point to the ordinance and say this is what's allowed. So when we have our discussions, we know what we did.
Okay.
Those are good things.
Okay, so.
More text to the code to the door.
Okay. Alright.
So I can get this done and back to me and get on the next meeting and then.
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have another question.
Yeah.
Ryan, and this is not unlike the other application that you came to us with.
Yeah.
Since putting in a new foundation, we need to look at whether or not this can be moved back at all.
Yeah.
And so the question is between the graph drive. I I know the scale's on here somewhere, I just can't find it. I don't know how big it is, that is. What's that?
So it's, um, actually, don't, don't laugh at this guy, because we were there yesterday and I was trying to figure out, you know.
Well, this isn't the McDonald's bed.
Because we have seen.
Seen that.
Well, um, you know, because I was just kind of doing my, the math and stuff, trying to figure out what, here's, you know, how we're going to accomplish what we want to do. But if you look, it actually has, it has a toilet bowl shape, the house is down here. Um, now get this all on graph paper. What, uh, you know, one-twenty's here, one-twenty's here, the septic field is here. Um, and then the well is right here, you got about seventy feet across there, and I don't, there's nowhere else you can move it. Um, the line comes right there, but I'll get this all on paper for you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
That'd be helpful.
And I do know the value, um, the value that is worth, it's pretty high, it was worth seventy.
Yeah, did I understand you correctly that the well is right here?
Are you going to take them up? I don't see this, this.
This continues around like that?
Yeah, that.
That's one apple.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we have row and leach field and the well.
Yeah, so leach field and wells.
Oh, there's a well.
Like right there, okay.
Alright, so there's not much.
No, but I'll get that all.
Okay, alright, I just needed to ask.
And do you want to see the PBR done with the application or does it? Would the?
What?
Yeah.
You want a permit by rule?
DEP, I would, in my opinion, I think that we do not have to have that, we have to condition it. I don't want to speak to others, but we've done that before.
Before we need?
No, just sometimes.
But what's this, not from the board here, what are we talking about?
So a permit by rule?
Yeah, why, why would that come into the world? Why is that coming?
He's asking if we would need that, and I said, we, we could say have make it a condition.
Why, what do you want to make decision? We never brought it up before.
I don't. Oh, yes, it's come up many times.
And we got, so what, how, what, what's the?
That's the way it was to dig them so close to the lake.
Correct.
So are you going to get a permit for, for the digging because it's close to the lake?
Yeah.
Okay, that has nothing to do with us.
No, no, no.
Right, right, okay, yeah, yeah, okay. So, so you're going to, so you're going to say that in the application that the, you having the condition is due to the fact that the state needs to get involved with it because of the excavation going on.
You already had that comment. But there's a time.
No, no, I don't know, I got everything ready to go.
Oh.
I think part of the problem, Peter, is I work with so many towns throughout the state, some are different, so some want the PBR, you know, on the application. So I was just asking if you need to see that, so.
Right, we typically haven't that way.
No, I recall, no.
I mean, oftentimes, um, I don't think of it, but Rich Baker will think of it.
Yeah.
Just because of, that was an area that he worked in before he retired, so.
It's funny because every town's different.
Yeah.
That's what I bring it up with, you know.
Yeah.
Chris there. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, every town's different, though we, we dealt with probably a couple thousand, so it's kind of hard to figure out like
Yeah.
what each town wants and stuff, so.
You know, it can be tricky.
Yeah, so I'll get the, I'll get a good graph, um, elevations and everything, and I'll get the well locked, evidence, you can see that it can't be moved.
Yeah.
I'll be, you guys will put the next one?
Yep.
Awesome.
Yeah. Do we need to cite which, which part of the ordinance that you talked about the with the nation?
Oh.
Just so you know.
Yeah.
Well, it's helpful to you.
Oh, yeah.
So that's on page twelve. Paragraph three.
Is this Belgrade or the?
Belgrade.
Belgrade, yeah.
Yes, I know, thank you. So page twelve, paragraph three. Foundations.
Foundations. That's a good clue in there.
Okay.
And I, I think it was P, maybe who somewhere brought up about, you know, setback requirements meant to the greatest practical extent.
Yeah.
Was determined, so. Isn't it?
Yeah, you're right, though, about, you know, the difference between different towns. Of course, part of that's the difference in culture in different towns, but and when we redid this several years ago, um, to bring it up the snuff with DEPs, minimal standards. For example, a lot of towns adopted the way DEP wrote it in terms of expansion to non-conforming structures. And what we found was one of the options under DEP would be a thirty percent over a baseline size in nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Our town doesn't have adequate records to know what was there in nineteen eighty-nine, so that kind of makes it hard.
And you know, I think your shoreline zoning ordinance is a great compared to some other towns. You know, from my standpoint, they use the work, but so I didn't know if there was something that was missing, you know, Gary didn't know about.
Right.
They're all different, you know, one of the hardest towns I've dealt with is Abbott, man.
Really?
Yeah.
Way up.
Oh, yeah, way up there.
Who would have thought?
No, was one of your shows done in in Addison or somewhere down east?
Well, we did Abbott, we did the, there's a, um, the caboose. And down east, we were in, um,
Right.
Oh, we were down past Bar a little bit.
Okay, because that was one of the first shows I saw.
Yeah.
So he's Abbott in the unorganized territory?
No, Abbott, no, he, um.
He's on Guilford.
He, I used to buy at Guilford and Dog Foxcroft, same.
Okay.
Same guy. So pretty much I come back with that and we can have a, we'll have a vote on it, get all the everything in line, okay.
Yeah.
I know fall's coming now, it's like, four wasn't an issue.
Right?
Alright, well, thank you, guys.
You bet.
I'll get that too. Do you want to email anybody that before I get here, so you have it or annoy, just bring it, bring it in the?
Yeah, um.
How's that going?
Boy, I I hate to see a single point of failure, um, and so without Gary, I would say to go to the town.
Tony and then.
Yeah, and then maybe the, maybe the deputy clerk too.
Okay.
That way two people get it. Where you guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, about it.
Yeah. I'm hesitant to offer all of our addresses because then it becomes a matter, you know.
Or maybe Anthony and town clerk.
Yeah, okay.
Mary.
Yeah, okay. I'll get that to begin the week.
Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a great night, Ray. Can I swing down to the, uh, is that, is that?
Oh, yeah.
Is that off of this or can I swing by?
Oh, yeah, go, go check it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, because I'm just, you know, a couple hundred yards away.
Yeah, as long as I don't take pictures. Don't tell them about it.
No, no, I don't, I don't, I will, will not, but but I'm interested because I want, you know, that was an interesting layout.
Right.
Based on what we discussed before, we got to approval, and then hearing, you know, that it was a positive thing. Yeah, well, it's, that's nice, man. It's really good to see a positive outcome.
Well, we had Pinnacle come in and drop one big pond, and we, they, we talked to them to keep in the other three ponds.
Yeah.
Really, they wanted the pines by the, um, why does that just come down?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, just cost and they weren't, they were healthy. So we took down one in the center, um, he elevated a little bit, we cleaned up some spots for thought. And, you know, I had the eighty foot mark taped right out.
Yeah.
But the guys, you know, when they framed it, I'll put it back.
Even a little more.
Let it go a hundred feet, it looks good.
Yeah.
Good. Yeah, it's going to be, I don't know if I can picture it, but pretty cool funky structure too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That is cool, yeah.
We use a lot of rough cut hemlock and stuff.
Yeah.
It's one of the, put a shed roof on the back, and she wanted a little platform. It's one of the, put a shed roof on the back and she wanted a little platform.
Yeah.
So it's like a little eight by eight deck and eight by a deck on top, the shed room, pretty cool. Just don't talk about it.
No. Alright, thanks, see ya. Okay, so this one we will revisit on our next one, or put this back together. With this, so in other words, we're not signing. The findings of that, and we're not signing the building for it. Okay.
Always fascinating, and I don't know your experiences, but when somebody uses hemlock. I've only worked on one renovation for friends once and, uh. He was on a really tight budget, so he's bought two by fours from two keys. I he he had to wear a swimsuit when putting the nails in, you got sprayed with water. Seen that way. Pretty wet.
I put my, uh, my back garage up with two hemlock, wet hemlock swamp, they call it swamp. And that's true, what George just said, but also two by fours, you know, they weren't even, there was a mix between, you know, two, between one and. Three quarter or two and a quarter or four, you know, three and a three and four. They had old saw equipment.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's all right when you're working on the outside, when you go on the inside.
Yeah.
So you never feel get a straight wall.
You have.
Yeah.
Well, this was an old eighteen twenties cape, so it didn't really matter.
So it was good for camps, you know, no insulation, no interior wall, stuff like that. That's all they're doing, you know, like that. Right, could be never really updated there.
And the lumber is nice and light to move around too, once it's dry.
Yeah.
And then if you have to do any renovations, you can't put a nail in, you would just crack, you break the nail.
Yeah.
So you got to pre-drill.
Yeah.
And and then put it. And it's a lot less expensive, though.
It all comes at a cost.
Oh, yeah, right.
No free lunch.
No free lunch. Alright, so this one, so the, uh, the unit property we'll do next time. Um, next on our agenda is old business. We have some, um, planning board minutes from September two and September sixteen. Do people have the minutes?
Oh, what about our discussion of subdivision ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry, I went by that one. So a discussion of the subdivision ones, so where, thank you, George, so where are we with that?
Well, at last meeting, you may recall, uh, we were discussing. And kind of bumbling around with, uh, the, uh, transfer of lots of family members and.
Right.
And Rich volunteered, how many, how many times could you do that? How many family members and all that kind of thing? And Rich had volunteered to, um, um, write up that question and and he did. And and Anthony submitted it to MMA legal, and we got a legal opinion. Which basically says you got a dozen relatives you can give away, a dozen lots. Yes, right, right, there there is that condition on it. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right.
So that that was helpful.
Right.
So, uh, we have that, so we know that helps a little bit with some of your concerns, I believe. And, um, the other thing, the other things that I thought maybe we should just discuss a little bit is. Because we're, you know, the clock's ticking here and, uh. Is, uh, I had sent out, I I thought it might be helpful and and maybe it wasn't, but, um. To take what we agreed to, I think we agreed to at the last meeting. And see how that and make those changes in the ordinance language itself.
Yeah.
And I actually brought some copies of that, so in case anybody didn't get it, I sent it as word, as PDF as well. And, uh, it might be good to make sure, you know, to avoid, uh, any additional confusion. If if we're all on the same page with that.
Yeah, I'll take a, take a copy of it, but I did read it in your email and.
Thank you. Pete, that's for you. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all I was trying to do was reflect what we talked about at the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah.
I like that, I like that solution.
And and the entire section, of course, on firefighting water. Yeah. Or from the. Feel less needed. And that that kind of raises another question, if if we're in agreement on that, uh, is. I I don't know what our status is with KB cog assisting us, so the question becomes, who's going to make these changes? You know, with these changes in the master or any other subsequent changes that come up with the remaining month and a half here.
Right. My thing, I mean, I don't know the answer, other than I'm thinking it has to be someone within KB cog. Whether it's Joel, is it Joel Greenwood? Uh, Charles former supervisor. Or if there's a new person to replace Charles, someone who would have access to his files to do. To me, it seems like that's where the changes or continued changes or alterations would take place.
Yeah. Actually, I agree, um, I'm just, well, it's not knowing, I guess, for sure where we stand, you know?
Yeah.
I know there was an agenda item for the select board to discuss. At least one meeting, maybe more than one meeting, about some kind of contractual arrangement. With KB cog, but I don't know, you know, I I didn't go to those meetings or anything, but.
Yeah, I had attended a meeting and there was some discussion on that, but I don't recall a decision.
Yeah.
So it would be good to get maybe from Anthony, if he's received final words, if the select persons were to make that decision and then. And then tell him just maybe get the information. So that would be good. I'd be happy to ask Anthony about that.
Yeah, I think it would be good to nail that down. The, uh. And then the. The, uh. The other thing, well. It'd be helpful to know what our drop dead deadline is for presenting a draft to the select board. I know we tried to do that back in August. Things just kind of fell, you know, the wheels came off the wagon, but. But, uh. So that, you know, we don't. Get the eleventh hour.
Sure. Yeah.
So. Make sure we use our remaining time or else.
Yeah, I I'd like, maybe another way to say it, and this is. Just my own bias, but to understand the remaining timeline, it's going to be very important.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, that's fine, because I'm not really sure if it's before Christmas. That first, you know, week or two after Christmas, I just don't know. It's been different things at different times.
Would that be the same timeframe as the solar? Solar ordinance as well?
Yeah.
Because that's for the commercial development.
Yeah.
Right, to to take, because we saw examples, right? For the solar things that would go into, or think would go into the, uh, in its version of the commercial development, if you were.
Well, the only example I've seen didn't come from KB cog, it came from Dan Newman.
Right, right.
He was a town of Chelsea's. Which I have some problems with actually, but, um, I think there's some gaps in that, but. You know, not to say that it is a good ordinance, it's just, you know, there may be things we might want to add to it. But I got the impression when we, I mean, we didn't get to discuss this much at all, Charles, in terms of substance, so. But I got, had the impression that he had a model ordinance in mind that he thought would be a good foundation to start from. But I don't, you know, we never saw.
Right.
Did he talk about that? When we, when we talked about it? We did talk about it a little bit.
Barely, yeah, we just barely talked about it.
You know, look into it, that's right, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah. I mean, even Maine Audubon has a model ordinance, you know, so there's a number of them out there.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh.
I have one question from Chelsea. Section seven, number thirteen. Financial gain from net metering or electric power is not considered commercial activity refused to offset energy costs of private individuals? I didn't understand what that meant.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
Not clear, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so getting clarity on something like that, because because without knowing much more about what it means, is it, is it to be? If I'm not a commercial and private and I put up a bunch of things and I'm net metering, is that somehow applicable in that or not?
Or I was thinking if they, what I was, because they list private things that you can do privately in here, that would sound all good. But if you're a solar array and you try saying, well, this is for. Uh, local use. Is that what that's considered net metering? Is that considered?
Yeah.
So if people buy into it on like one thirty five, yeah. Are they now not a commercial?
Right, one of those community solar.
Yeah.
I didn't hear what that was.
Yeah, I mean. It seems to me, size matters, you know, regardless of how that power is going to be used, you know, or who's buying it. So like you said, you know, if that's going to be a community solar, where, you know, you can buy into it as an individual homeowner. Enter into a contract, uh, to get, uh, rebate basically on the power bill. Size of the project doesn't change and the impact of the project doesn't change. It seems to me, you know, their si- size of the project should be a factor here.
And that was the sizes of what was listed in that.
Yes, maybe. How we get clarity?
Well, I, I, I think, you know, we need to find, it it's kind of related to the question I asked before, where do we stand with KB cog in terms of them assisting us? I mean, I I would, I for one would like to see what their thoughts are on, are on a good model to start with and. And if it's Chelsea, then, you know, they should be able to work us through this question or any other questions. But back to the subdivision ordinance, um, the other thing, Peter. And it kind of got lost in the hustle and bustle of trying to meet our original deadline. Uh, and that is, I would very much still like to have a public informational meeting. When we're, the three of us were before the select board, it was pretty clear the select board wants that kind of a meeting. And so, you know, once we know what our drop dead deadline is, then we have to work back from it. So hold that informational meeting. And allow us enough time in the event that comments are brought to our attention that we feel are. Weren't a change to the ordinance. You know, the majority of order, you know, the ordinance entirety.
So if we were to do that, then then what we presented the public informational meeting would not be a final final, it's like a.
No.
It's like a pre-final.
But it should include like these changes.
Right. Right.
Because we've already agreed to.
Exactly. Well, I will ask about where we stand with KB cog, want to know about, um, getting a deadline. For this, for the subdivision and working backwards from there, once we know what the deadline is, by establishing it. For, um. A public information meeting. Alrighty, um. Is there anything else on the proposed subdivision ordinance? I mean, certainly we have a little bit of homework to do. It's going to involve a little bit of KB cog type of stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, those were the tasks that came to my mind.
Well, George, thank you for also for providing the language that you did. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Very, very helpful. Um, is there anything else about the subdivision ordinance we want to talk about tonight? So is there a given one to the minutes?
So before, before, before we do that, uh, you have to, of course, again, commercial development review ordinance. In, I was back in, that was a part of our request from last week.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, so one of them is findings of fact, right?
Yeah, we've already done, I, yeah, we went through and signed.
Yeah, both of them find the fact, what's the difference between the two?
I don't know if they think.
Yes, one's, one's, uh, ten pages. And one of them is a lot less.
I don't know, it's over anyway.
Yeah, okay.
We done, we done all our part.
I don't know, I'm gonna see why one's ten.
It says one ten. Was one double sided?
They're both double sided.
No saving, you go.
Okay, I, I just figured out now, I didn't think they left, what did they give me two for? I know. Clerical thing.
Yeah, they said, you know what, somebody said, let's confuse the playing board, let's put two of those on the table.
Mission accomplished, right? Alright, so, um, thank you for that, let's go to the minutes, and I think we have, do we have the minutes from September two? Can this?
Yeah.
Is September, supposed to be sixteen, but it says seventeen, or first September two minutes. People saw this here, um, is out of the country, she's visiting family, so she's not.
Was she visiting?
She has family members of, oh, Puerto Rico.
Oh, wow.
So she's there today, I believe.
In between hurricanes, huh?
Right.
Yeah. Boy. So don't understand.
I wouldn't hear that.
We're all listed present, but it's called order, meaning it was not called order, you know, enough members, too.
Yeah, I mean.
September two. It's, that's accurate. There was a meeting we had that we could not.
Right, we didn't have a forum. So.
But it says that we did, playing board did not have enough members present before.
Correct.
So I shouldn't be listed there, because I wasn't.
I would, I would.
Oh, that's Craig.
Yeah, yeah, that's okay, you saw Craig and then.
That's the other Craig.
Yeah, right, so, so, so to, so to be clear on this one, I think I indeed think that this was the date. That we didn't have enough people here. So I think that was reflected for people present is, is appropriate. So then we didn't do anything. So that's that, we okay with that? Yeah, what else? Then next up is September, the meeting minutes from September sixteen.
So I I probably should explain, uh, you'll see, if you've already looked at this or as you're looking at it. You may recall the meeting, during the course of the meeting, the owl took a hiatus.
Yes.
And, uh, and so we lost the recording and. The underlying portion, uh, I just. Thought I'd add my ideas on things that I recall and, uh, that. Uh, we discussed after that. Uh, we discussed after that, uh, the recording was lost. I thought, you know, if I did that, maybe then the rest of you could add whatever you recall as well. With, uh, assuming what I have here is, is just, it's, uh, accurate.
I had read this before and I thought that what. What was presented as a, as a recap of what we discussed was accurate, I had. I had nothing else to add to it.
But then we're discussing all the changes about. The subdivision ordinance as well. And that's what you wrote down for us. Besides the question, how many lots will be transferred?
Yeah, I, I couldn't fully remember everything we discussed, we certainly just came up with the compromise that was captured. So that, that probably should be, that should probably be recorded.
Good point, so Craig, like, for example, I think one of the things we leaned on was the size, right? One to six acres.
I brought up. Possible changes and we settled on three, uh, the three, the. Size. And, uh, the monuments and the, and the. The firehogs.
Oh, yeah, fire.
Yep, which is why. And this.
And the planning board agreed and. To those three.
Agreed.
This is a different meeting that we have the jobs that we all agree to give.
Right.
So I like that idea, ha- having that which we discussed, you know, added to these minutes, those, those things in particular. So, um, I guess I would make sure to ask that Julie. Uh, can reflect those changes as requested and discussed tonight. So we have, so I'll say them out loud again, just in case we don't care, so what we talked about at that time, what, and we agreed upon was, uh, size. Um, the monuments.
Of the, uh, minor subdivision.
Of the minor subdivision, thank you. Size, monuments and firehogs. And then we, we agreed to add to those topics and, um, and that's what we did.
So the size was just to remind. The monuments and the firehogs was to everything.
Right.
Right. Good point.
Both.
Yeah. Great. Okay. Okay, so. Edits, then. We've talked about the edits for the minutes from the sixteenth, right? One of them was what we just talked about to add to it. Another one, I think we already identified was that the date was actually Sep- September sixteenth as, as opposed to seventeen. I was listed, so.
The other day.
Um, are there any other edits we need to highlight so that Julie may capture them? No, no. So at this point, um, like, I'll have a question after this one. Um, so at this point, for the minutes of September sixteen, are we ready to vote on those minutes? So I would entertain a motion on the minutes from September sixteen.
So make a motion to accept the minutes for the September sixteenth as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
And second, any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor, so roll call, so George?
Yes.
Yes, Craig?
Yes.
Pete? Yes, and me, yes, that's four in favor and none opposed. So then, um, it's gonna sound silly, but I wanted to ask, how does the board feel about September second, even though we didn't have a meeting, do we have to? Anybody feeling, have a need to approve ministers, something that didn't happen?
You say, let me make a, I make a motion to, uh. Motion that, that we, that we reviewed the, uh. Minutes for that day.
Rather, just keep it plain and simple?
Yeah, so we do.
I don't think it hurts to, um.
Due to the fact that we didn't have a court.
Court.
Yeah. I agree, I, I, I think, we're both saying the same, gonna say the same thing, uh. I, I don't think it hurts to have documentation that we were unable to meet because we had it. You know.
Okay, but entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of September second.
Okay. In second, any more discussion, uh, we, we.
I like, I like review better, but that's all right. I'll, I'll get picky about it.
Okay, thank you Pete, and we did want to highlight the fact that it's, um. It was, uh, a meeting that was not held, you did not have a forum. All those in favor, George?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Me, yes, so that's four in favor and none opposed. Okay, is there anything else for us to discuss tonight? There were two things from email that kind of threw me, uh, if you guys saw the two, I just wanted to bring it up, one was. Did anybody see the email from a person in Sydney who is talking about the lights from Hammond?
How powerful that conversation.
So, 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 um, there's an interesting dilemma. I, I'm not trying to wade into it, don't get me wrong, I don't know how a person from another town. Um, would have say about what our towns ordinance either says or doesn't say. Uh, maybe there's some legal precedent out there, I, I don't know where that's gonna go, cause the way that email was phrased to us was, um. What's it called, night? Night pollution or night?
Dark sky.
Dark sky ordinance or something, so. I, I would imagine that if, if this person got his way or her way. Um, that there might be a way to. Recommend or ask this municipality to come up with a night, night sky ordinance. I don't know. But, I don't know where it's gonna go.
We are maybe, uh, again, relying on, K, K, not KB cog, oh, we could rely on KB cog, I think the research a little bit. But, uh, you know, the, uh, the White Works, um. MMA, they, they can probably have something on, on the shelves here someplace about it.
Yeah.
I would guess.
You know, I, I wasn't quite sure how to interpret that original email, it was. One, one way you can interpret is the way you have computer and as it's. That individual was suggesting Belgrade Development Ordinance, I, I know Sarah asked the question, does Belgrade have a dark sky ordinance? Which of course we don't. Um, the other way you could look at it, this is the way I initially interpreted, but, you know, who knows? That it was like somebody from another town filing a complaint about something happening in Belgrade. Uh, and, you know, I was, I was, not that I've ever done anything about it, but it's like when. I was still working and every day had drive past that junkyard in Sydney on Route twenty seven. And, you know, would bitch to my wife about, why the hell doesn't Sydney do something about that? You know?
Sydney had business.
Well, I, I, I don't know what the answer is, you know, it obviously if. Something was happening on the border. With another town and they were in a butter or a Greek party, that's a different matter. This individual's all the way on the other side of Metzolonski Lake and I under, you know, I, I don't doubt for a minute that, you know, he can see the lights of him, I mean. You probably can see Hammond lumber from outer space, but the, but the fact of the matter is, the other issue here is. Hammond lumber's grandfather, uh, they're the only ordinance we have that deals with light pollution, that's the commercial development. You know, absent building some new building or something like that. Uh. You know, that's the way it is.
And the other thing that could happen is that that resident could just write to the commercial. Um, property and ask them.
Right.
To, to do something, you know, different than what they do, you know, just sort of voluntary compliance.
You know, yeah, but, I, I mean, as a town, I, I don't. See where we have any jurisdiction of.
I didn't either, I didn't either.
And we don't even know anything about it, it's, the depression just moved here in the last few years and now all of a sudden, you know, Hammond's been there for a while.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, they bought their property. And Hammond's is already there, I mean, why, why?
Yeah, well, I mean, you, you can turn it around too, why the hell they build it on top of that bridge? Where you, you can see it when you're fishing on the lake, you know?
You know. There, there are a lot of things that could happen like that, you know, we, the other way to look at it too, someone could argue, it might be a weak argument, but. In other places in unorganized territories, there are, um. Ordinances or limitations or criteria that are. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. Someone could look up at that rich property that's complaining about the end and say. You've got too much shining up there.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, so just be careful in some ways about what's being asked, because it's.
Well, and, and the other thing is this concept of dark skies, as I understand it. Is really for the very more remote parts of, well, the country as well as the state, you know, like Baxter State Park and places like that. Where being able to see the bright night sky is part of the attraction, you know, so you don't want. But here, that horse is out of the barn a long time ago. Uh, you know, there's no such thing as the dark sky in Belgrade and we can see the lights of Augusta and Waterville from our field. You know, um, you can't, you know, we used to try to, we got a lot of telescope when the boys were young, you know, and tried astronomy and all that, I, I can't watch. Squat me.
I just see the lights in Skelvegan.
What's that?
I can see the lights in my place, it's not Skelvegan, I think it's Skelvegan up there.
Actually, that makes sense.
I don't know.
You know, but, but, you know, you could turn the telescope to the eastern northeast, because there was nothing to see, because it was blocked, you know, it's all. All lights, uh, nightlights from, from western Waterville, that's just the way it is and has been for a long time.
So I'm not sure what's gonna happen with that, I don't know, I just wanted to bring it up so we all have some little awareness, I don't know if.
Well, I don't think the planning board had, at this point, had any jurisdiction over it, so, we don't have to be responsible, would, would we discuss it? You know, if the select one want to get involved, fine.
Go for it, dudes.
Okay, refresh my memory, who was that email actually addressed to, was it to Anthony?
I, I think it was to Anthony, I believe, yeah. So. So that was one thing that came up. And, and the other thing that came up via email was, um. Uh, something from a, a taxpayer here in the town of Belgrade who has seen property. Become, was it Airbnb property, is that what I saw? Um. Maybe I only saw it then, um, and the person was asking that the planning board review the, uh. What has happened, so what, the point was, I don't know which property it is, but, but the property, I think the way it was described in the email was. That it, it was, um, a piece of property that now is being, um, short term leased through like Airbnb. If you heard that before, where people sign up and say, oh, I'll stay there for a weekend and another person, another person. So, his, this person's point was, in effect, it's changed use.
Oh, change of view.
Without any playing board approval.
Okay, so, okay, so that, that should run through, technically runs through the code enforcement office, we don't have a code enforcement officer right now.
Correct, that could be put on the back burner, I wanna get new code enforcement officer here.
Plug into it.
That, that's what I think too, you know.
And, you know, to give echo them, play the town manager.
Yeah, it's kind of a slippery slope though in a town like Belgrade that has a long tradition of people. Who own camps on the lake, renting them out for periods of time through realtors, not Air, Airbnb. Or, or any of the other onsite, um, forums, but, you know, I don't know. Uh, um. I, I don't know, it, it would take some five. I don't know what the answer is, but you need to take into account the long term tradition of doing that. People doing that, the, the other thing too is you may recall. Um, we had, Gary had gotten complaints or, and he brought them to us, or I don't remember exactly how this came up, but it was the. Um, house that's sort of close to, uh, or next to the town beach on Lake Shore Drive. And that was a little different in that he apparently was rent, leasing it or renting it out for functions like, uh. Bachelor parties and as well as overnight stays on a regular basis and, and. And parking was an issue, I guess, and this was when Danny Ketchell was, um, town manager and there was a lot of huff of. About parking possibility of a parking ordinance and the support chose to not to go that route. Um, I, I'm not sure that was the only reason for that, but, uh, cause. I think we were just privy to a very small part of the discussion, but. In one sense, that's a little different because, um, you know, somebody's renting it out as a function room or. It's not unlike, uh, what we proved tonight, you know, a classroom or, or something of that nature versus. The Airbnb kind of scenario. I, I mean, I know this is a real big issue in towns like South Portland where it's changed the, you know, dynamic, the, the, the whole. Uh, feel of a neighborhood, some neighborhoods where, you know, most of the buildings are no longer single family residents and where they're Airbnb. And so, you know, um, it, it, it sounds complex to me. Uh, but it, it seems to me if. There are certain circumstances for the commercial development ordinance. Probably comes into play, but I don't think it's the Airbnb. I'm, I'm not sure about the Airbnb, cause if that, if it applies there, then why doesn't it apply to? You know, me renting my camp for a week or two weeks or.
Yeah, I don't know, but. Maybe sometime this, you know, would have to be at least funneled at least through what would be eventually our code enforcement officer. I think that's the starting point.
Yeah, no, it is, it is, somebody needs to give it some serious thought.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, exactly, but I just wanted to bring that up because I hadn't seen that any about it. And I'm, I'm hesitant to. Conduct official business through email that's not in the planning board section.
Yeah.
I, I, I try not to do that. Cause I don't wanna give the appearance that just cause I had an opinion or response by something is, that I'm somehow speaking for a group. That's not what we're about.
Was that email directed to you?
Yeah, I was, I was on it, I think it went to Anthony, maybe Gary, myself. Pardon me.
Well, that's kind of being a cheer.
I mean, that's an issue I could see, you know, bubbling up again, you know, that, that one may not go away.
Right, I'm sure that it will. I agree. So. Uh, is there anything else we need to discuss tonight?
Yeah.
Well, there's been chatter with the Dollar General around town and stuff. Do we have the potential? If something was to come to town, this is the Dollar General in King Fear. Do we have the ability to make from design a building, a certain one? Do we have the ability to require them to make? Make the building fit in rather than we are locked door.
It's a great question, like, and I'm curious if it may fall under something called aesthetics. That, um, cause I don't know that we have a standard, right, um, I'll give you some prime examples, some, some, um, places. I think Freeport is. I think they came up with a, an aesthetics extending, you know.
Oh, you're talking McDonald's?
McDonald's, right, had to follow that. Um, I know in other western towns, in order to fit certain western characteristics, is, and yeah, this stand, Bill Colorado, I have. Yeah, the other one, I'm sure some other place do too, but I'm not sure that we do.
Yeah, and I'm in fact, um, fairly certain we don't in there, because the only ordinance that would, well, not the only, but the primary ordinance that would apply would be the commercial development. The ordinance, and that very issue came up when Nextdoor Dollar General was proposed there.
Yes.
And, um. Gary, uh, had experience with dealing with them in Augusta out on Route seventeen. And advising us that, uh. You know, they have these canned designs and, and it, it doesn't matter if they're East Overshue, Wisconsin, or Belgrade, Maine, they're gonna use the same damn design, you know? Uh, cause it's cheaper that way. And, uh, but they have other canned designs also that they don't tell you about. That apparently are more, you know, pleasing to the eye and more interesting, not just a kind of a box. Um, and so we had this discussion about, could we require them to do that, or could we just ask them to do that, you know? I think. My feeling at the time was, we didn't really have the authority to require them to do that. But it did put a focus on the importance of the vegetative buffer. Which they didn't want, they wanted a, they wanted a waiver to the vegetative buffer.
Correct.
Move that.
So, so, you know, in terms of the aesthetics, that's, I think, the only thing we would require as the ordinance is currently written. Uh, apparently Augusta had more authority, cause they apparently required them to redesign the building.
Yeah.
Whether it's a major improvement, it's up to.
Yeah, we, I would think the board, you know, could, can talk about, maybe we'd come up with something, you know, to, you know, have a design. More pleasing, you know, for, on the commercial order, and it, but we still would have to bring it into the. Select people, you know, and, but before we did that, we have to talk to select people first, so, okay, make it a, you know, known to them, the, what, what, thinking, maybe. You might want to do instead of, why and all that, see what they think first of all. You know, again, we take that direction from them.
This same subject came up with, um, or varied there of in the course of the development of comprehensive plan. Um, because it was discussion of, could we, uh, regulate box stores differently than all commercial, other commercial? Yeah.
Right, right.
And I guess it's been decided by the courts multiple times, cause other towns have been there.
Yeah.
And, um, and so, you know, whatever you do, do, whatever you require of, um, Dollar General. You know, the ordinance has to also apply to R and R Auto or whoever, you know? Um, and so, that's the rub.
Would that be?
I wonder how, uh, with the free, you know, Freeport. Yeah, but they did.
Yeah, but they, 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 they developed warrants that applies to everybody.
Oh.
Oh, right, interesting. Right, exactly, you know, and it's, that's probably true, even whether you have zoning or not.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter if you have zoning.
Right, exactly.
It's just a matter of what performance standard.
Right, right.
I mean, you, you could do exactly as Pete, Pete suggested, you could, you know, put in a standard in the commercial development review ordinance, but then it applies to everybody and. You know, so it becomes sort of the rub.
Yeah, yeah, interesting.
But, I mean, and the reason, you know, I, I don't remember, they wanted like eleven waivers or something, some ungodly number of waivers.
Small number of kind of parking spots and all that.
Yeah, all kinds of stuff, and, and when it became clear that we weren't amenable with that, that's why they're in Usher and not in Belgrade.
Right, right. But, Belgrade, they're looking at a lot.
Oh, they are? Oh, I didn't know that, I didn't.
Yeah, they what? They are looking at a lot.
What lot?
He, he's not talking, I thought he can't talk.
It's funny.
Well, you know.
I can say this because I'm not involved in it, and Gary had mentioned it to me before, last time I saw it. He said, uh, yeah, I got, they came in and it's not a secret, you know, they're looking on Route twenty seven.
I know. That's a big flat, like going up, going, village up to the left, go over a road by Tony there.
I don't know, it was Ron Valvance's property as well.
Oh, Ron, yeah.
Oh, okay, that would make sense.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I don't know if it's gonna be that, maybe it's what you're ta, talking about, but that's what Gary had mentioned to me, he said, don't be surprised if we see this coming before the planning board. Like, okay. But that was several weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, what advantage that lot would have, with, with, you know, well, advantage, um. A limitation of this lot was, it's, they didn't have adequate lot size and they didn't have the right configuration for the minimum lot size ordinance. So it wasn't just a commercial development, it was also a lot size.
That one is much more plug and play in terms of lot size, road frontage, um, existing. Line of sight. You know, I'm not saying it's a done deal, cause I don't know.
You know, it'd be interesting if they do go forward with that, it's whether do you require them to have a turn on, turning lane? They did for when that grocery store was proposed for the Hammond.
He did.
Warehouse there.
Which was one of the reasons why it never happened.
Right, yeah.
It became a deciding factor for. Again, I don't know what the final plans are or anything, just saying, that did come up from Gary.
There aren't too many, too many things that unify people in this town, but a Dollar, uh, General Store would.
You think people would unite, I'd be like, no?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it, it has, technically, look, fitting in with that, will change. It's probably go far, you know, more likely.
Yep.
Well, there are other issues that we can't deal with, you know, like for example, Christie's. Uh, primarily, uh, to a lesser extent, days, you know, uh, raised objections because it, it would hurt their business. We, you know, that's the free market system.
That's right, on addition, yeah.
It, it, it is, it is, it is in fact.
I mean, I wouldn't like it, but you know, that's the free market system, we have nothing to say about it.
Really don't, you know? So I have my own opinions about, about, you know, ways to combat that, you know, if I were, you know, multimillion dollar person, I'm gonna buy the property.
Right.
Myself, right, you know, and then have control of it, you know, but I'm not.
So you're not.
So there you go, so I just, you know, watch stuff happen, right?
But I, I think, you know, my takeaway from this project over Nextdoor was that the importance of our vegetative screening standards and.
Yeah.
And for, particularly for a project like that, that, in my personal opinion, is hard to construe that as attractive.
Right.
Uh, it, it's important in terms of mitigating the impact on the town. And the appearance of the town.
Agreed, agreed. The other thing about that lot down there. That's more plug and play, not that it is a done deal or anything, though, is that relative to the comprehensive plan. That's fitting with what the comprehensive plan talks about, relative to where, um. Relative to the travel throughway, that corridor, where commercial activities would occur. Just in, in that line, you know, uh, cause that's what the comprehensive plan talked about, right, was along the travel corridor where there's already a throughway. If there's gonna be commercial activity, we said, certain amount of distance off that.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the map to see if that's within the village. District.
Right, and I, and I think, I, I can't swear to it, I'd have to look at the map too, I think it probably stops. So this side of the village district, I think that beige color of.
Yeah.
The distance off twenty seven was whatever it is.
Yeah.
I can't square to it, but I think this was.
My recollection, but it's probably faulty, it's the, the village district stopped at the Sagewegen Road.
Right, which would have been downstream of just where this is, right, so.
Well, you know, what's the other interesting thing is, if I recall correctly. Different use, but that property had received approval years ago under the commercial development ordinance for. Equipment storage or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, that.
One.
Yeah.
Result, y'all presented information, so.
Then we'll get double D's back down there.
The mapping nights. I think one's making more money than the other one, though.
Here's my, here's, here's my, uh, wish, um, that we don't get that, if that, we're gonna get an application for that, we don't get it till we get. Uh, subdivision and the commercial, and the solar farm and, and wind farm ordinance is finished.
Yes, I know, that'd be great.
Cause it'll, it's gonna be one hell of a time, great.
You know, as you go into, uh, North Augusta, on the right hand side, they're doing big development over there, right? And plus I have the wind farm, so.
Solar.
Solar.
Solar farm?
Yeah.
And then when you go across, uh, Canuck River, on the, that new bridge there on the left, another wind farm.
Yeah, by church, by church road there.
Yeah, that's all within the past year. And then just before that, if you go further down on Route three, there's a little where, where the lumber place was on the left hand side.
Yeah.
Points, whatever, right across the point that used to be a field there.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a solar farm, that all happened the past two years, yeah.
Well, I think.
None of them are operating yet.
I don't know if you guys saw the email from Anthony with a link to a newspaper article. About Augusta just, uh, adopting some standards to improve the aesthetics of, of solar farms, and I think it's all those. The cumulative impact of all those that drove that.
Oh, really?
I, I actually went looking for it on their, on their, uh, discuss, city of Augusta website. The state, they make the state of Maine look good, and so, freaking complex, you can't find a goddamn thing. But, but my understanding from reading the newspaper article is that they gotta correct is they're requiring an earthen burl. With planting on either one or both sides.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
So that would be the visual screening?
Yeah.
That's cool, yeah, yeah, makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
The only place I've seen that used at, at the state level is around mining operations.
It could be worse, right?
Like down in Combs.
See a big hole.
Yeah, it could be worse, it could be a big hole in ground. Good point, well put, Keith. I'll let you be the one that says that in public.
We got a big hole in the ground now, and the fourth point road, let's get inside, it used to be, be a big hill, Rick, glad you got that, get that, you know, I got, I get to wait before Rick.
For sure.
Yeah, back in the fifties, I thought pictures of, there's a big hill there. Big hole.
Just gets used. All right, gentlemen, is that it for today? Thank you, everybody, um, eight oh five, we're calling it a wrap, so, what I'm gonna do is first, uh, see now.
Peter, at our next meeting, should we have another placeholder for the subdivision ordinance? In case you get answered to any questions?
We should.
We not, I'm concluding yet?
Uh, not yet, I'm trying to find out how I can start recording. You're using the, you know. I think I stopped it, I don't know, I'm gonna leave the meeting, I should stop it. It says that. So that's done, that's done.